Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, call the order of Board of Alderman and Saint Mary's June 12th, 2012. Yeah, 2025, row call, Alderman, doctors and dudah. Here. Alderman, Kathy Bergman.
Here.
Excuse me, Alderman. Alderman Rosenleit.
Here.
All right, all panel floor. Prive of agenda.
We need to modify that.
What we need to modify, please.
The bank is not covered and this needs to be added.
All right. So on the agenda, we need to do an amendment with taking First State Community Bank out with their findings and what they want to do with their presentation and substitute that with the small utility billing software and signature page. Jess probably has more on that than I do.
All that is, is making me the, not the owner, but the person on the account rather than April, just changes from April to me. The contact.
All right.
And that's an additional item on the agenda?
Yeah, that would be a replacement.
We can talk about this if you want to.
Yeah, we can talk about that. That will be the replacement for since First State Community Bank couldn't be here tonight, they rescheduled till July. So if you guys don't have any objections to it, we can actually move subs software for the signature page in lieu of that and then pass on to July when they want to schedule with us. That's totally up to you guys.
That's fine.
So at that, is there a sponsorship on that amendment?
I make a motion to enter that in as a substitute item on the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, first and second, Alderman Bergman, all favor?
Right.
Any opposed? All right, pass on that.
If that being the case, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, Doc made a motion to approve consent agenda. Do we have a second on the floor?
I'll second that.
Motion made and second by Alderman Rosenleit, all favor?
Yes.
All right, nice. All through. All right, amendments from the previous meeting, if you guys want to go through that.
Just throw it in there.
All right, climb out.
Yeah.
They will get that to you here in a second. Meanwhile, we're listening to some. All right. If you guys want to perjure any of that, say with anything, who likes their manager taken?
Sorry.
Let's see here, I think there's something on here, but let me check. Okay.
There's a lot, I'm sorry, it was a little.
Yeah.
Where's it at, honey?
It should be on the desk, good night. Good night, I'm coming in real quick. I'm just going over this, there's a lot of them. Anybody come in every day?
Yeah, you're probably gonna have to.
All right, that's right, put it in folder style.
What do you hear?
It was in reference to a couple things, but I just want to make sure we're clear on it, make sure we're okay. There we go.
You want me to start?
No, is there anything want change or?
Anything else, anything you want to change in the?
No, it's, hmm. No, you have it, it's like it's up very close.
You'll probably keep doing that, Joey, if you don't close it all, close it all the way, was I in there, dude?
Mm-hmm.
If you don't close it all the way, it'll probably come back over.
All right, I'll find it later, it's been a minute, but we're busy with that. Big ass, big foot. All right, thank you, anybody want to make any changes, okay. All right, if anybody wants to make any changes to it, just do it. I would be revisited. All right. Okay. So, all right, there's that. All right. You guys have your report, you guys have nothing to say, you're good. We have, probably changes can be made.
Okay, so I make a motion to accept the amendments from the previous meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion made, second, all favor? And O. All right, so we have all eyes.
Yes.
Okay, cool, all right. All right, and this is treasurer's report. You see anything other than that?
I don't know, I want to talk about, I mean, what else, pretty good.
Let's see here.
You had some questions on it.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The store funds balance sheet, oh, here's the treasurer's report.
Yeah, that's the treasurer's.
So it's actually in the balance sheet on server. Balance sheet on server. Yeah, store funds balance sheet as of May 3025, and we have, because it looks good, but I just wanted to ask about it, the total liabilities and equity have decreased $70,000 from last year. Is there a reason for that? I mean, it's good that our liabilities are going down, but what was, do you know what the contributing elements to that was?
No, where did you see?
Is it? Total liabilities and equity is $720,668.65, and P C in the year was $789.42. So is that a result of paying something off, like a long-term debt that's down now?
Well, one of the bonds, when it was over, he said there were, remember that? We had to open up a new account. We did do that, and then some of the money we got from the spectrum agreement and then also purple wave and that, we took that, paid that up, I guess because we weren't compliant with state statute, we didn't, they got us in compliance with state statute and brought that up to, should be, because that one was maxed out, and I think for two years, nobody's moved money, so we took that and then actually paid, I think, a year or two worth on that, so.
Great.
Which I think that would be, sure, yeah, that would also have. Liabilities and long-term, any other things you could see?
Yeah, there was, oh, I don't know if this is a point, the monthly budget report.
That's, oh, from the treasurer?
Yeah. This is year, I mean, 30, 2025, so May 2025, so this is now, that'd be, plus the end of May, so it kind of wraps things up.
Yeah.
But we are payroll, okay, store fund, this is kind of high, about 82%. Is that because of the dredging that we had to do earlier in the year or?
Well, you have, or the, oh, it's grinder replacement.
We bought six grinders since I started.
I mean, we're, they're dropping my flies, okay.
And the grinder faults, was it, are they, is it because they're older ones or the newer ones, are they newer ones?
They're old.
It's all older ones? No, new ones, yeah.
So I had one new one that we had to replace, but what it was, I think, the issue was, is I got a cheap oak soap to me, basically for not long use, and it went out, so we had to replace that one.
I think it was out of warranty?
No, it was out of warranty, it then had its warranty life. And anyway, so if I would have went back and got another one, I've been like $1,500 for one, anyway, versus the E1s, which are a little higher, but they're more standing behind their, their words, so, that's the only way we replaced it. I wish I could take it back to them and tell them it was a dud, but there's two of them in town right now, and one of them went out and opened the other and done what I did, but it was basically for just short-term use, it was almost like a soap pump.
In the beginning, they gave us like trial units or something, correct?
The what?
In the beginning, when we started with them, when they were promoting these grinders, I think they gave us a trial one to see how it worked. Is that initial one that they put in, now it's still operational?
That was still operational.
Okay, cool. And some territories down on street, was that, is it 79% usage today, year-to-date for street, is that because of the street repairs that we had seen or beginning or something?
We didn't have, at the time, when the budget came up, remember the asphalt thing from last year?
So carried over?
So carried over, so all we would have to do is, if we amended that amount to that, that would actually give us our hard, you know, real number.
Okay.
We'll just have to amend that to that amount, and then actually that will be our three percentage in usage for the year.
All right, and our admin budget, is it?
Yeah.
Twice, 216%.
Which we've been looking into that, I mean, March, it was already high, if I don't know if you can pull up March, if you would, March, to now, take a look at. But we've also cut a lot of expenditures and unnecessary runs and things like that too, which has helped a lot, you know?
All right, but we've got June, July, August. So we have four more months to go and we're at 216, so. Unfortunately, the low usage in the other areas helps balance it out, but still, the next four months, you got, I don't know what you look to do.
March, we're at, we were at 102% before, we didn't onboard, so just came at the end. So we were at 102% shows right here and we were negative, I don't know what happened there, so we can go through that, but I think there was just some government waste spending that shouldn't have occurred, but happened, but.
Well, it's pretty significant, we were at 120% in April, we're at 216 now.
How did we go from in April to 120% down to this much? Oh, that's a good one this year.
And this could be partially me working the full month. In March, I, I, I'm not working on that much. April, I was working the full month, and then May, the full month.
Interesting. What else is in admin? Under QuickBooks, what's in admin? A bunch of lineups.
We have lots of lineups.
I think everyone's just adjusting.
So admin budget, that's not payroll, that's?
That's just, there's multiple things in admin.
That's everything.
Yeah.
For running the office and stuff.
Yeah, logistics stuff, things like that.
Does it include payroll or not?
Well, the way it works is payroll is in the general account, so these are within one another, so when you do the payroll, it's transferred from general to payroll, so it starts out admin before it moves to payroll.
That's me, okay. All right.
So that's, I just wanted to note that. Yeah, because I've been wondering about that, and I thought it was just one department, but it's actually like different items.
Well, in the general fund, it also includes Tyler, and it's broke down in QuickBooks under police, fire, we don't do much in street, park or cemetery, but between police and fire, you've got there, there's been, fuel charges are high, not so for Tyler, more so than the fire department.
Oh, but that's, oh, so.
But you're looking at mowing, all your mowing fuel and costs come out of general.
Okay, and then the police component of it, is that for salary only or is it salary equipment?
Well, unfortunately, Tyler doesn't have much income.
See?
He, we get about, our last check was about $1,500 in fees from the tickets that he's been writing, however, Tyler only gets a portion of that, so his income, his expenses exceed his income.
That's, yeah, which you always will have, that, because you have to pay in certain funds and accounts or pieces.
Right, right.
But beforehand, everything was, it would have balanced that better because now this part goes to this part, now this part goes to this part, versus before, it was just thrown in general left alone.
We are paying a lot of this, we're catching up, we're, we're catching up.
The old adult says let go, and now we're free.
Yeah, we're catching up.
Yeah. All right, well, that explains that.
Yeah. All right. Anybody got any other questions from the treasurer's report? Or comments or ideas?
Well, as an idea, it would be nice to know what, if you could delineate what was an old expense versus what's current, to see what, how much in arrears we were prior to the year initiating employment here, and that way it helps, the chain of boxes clearly delineated, you know how much goes, is from what, from what particular bracket.
Okay.
Just as an explanatory thing.
Okay.
All right, moving on to collector's reports. Does the, the local taxes fall under the, the record? The collector's report?
Yes.
And what Kathy pointed out earlier, there is one on there that needs to be subtracted, and it's Shannon Motop, that home was purchased and the taxes were paid.
Okay. That's just, I don't know if the names should be mentioned or anything. Okay, and so we're looking pretty good, we have a total in delinquencies of $403, which is awesome. Number 19, is this bracketed by time, 30, 60, 90 days, everything like that?
Um, it's by year, by year.
So we have a couple that are a few years old here?
Mm-hmm.
All right, but they seem to exceed the total, but there's one old one for $367, and then another one for $195, which would be for $550 or something like that.
And a lot of this, I mean, we, Jess had, she had three years to catch up on, there were three years of bad taxes, some were plugged in, some weren't, so we went up there progressively to that, fourteen grand.
No, but that old one is $562.
Which one?
The, like this last column?
Okay.
That's $562, and then the total over here is this $438, so that doesn't make sense.
$438 is a total across the bottom.
That's a, that's total near the city.
Near the city, four, three, four.
The last column was in what time? The $195 and the $367.
Doesn't look like it, I'm sorry.
So we got down, so yeah.
So it'd be more than that.
We had that, but who, what's it inactive, who's that one?
Sharon.
No, it's all the same.
Number 10.
Number 19.
Number, number 17.
Um.
We only have two currently that even have active water service.
Yeah, this one, a lot of these are going to have to go to collections for like darkness minutes and things like that.
Okay. But anyway, sign up and approve it over again, and so it's welcome. Good.
How we doing? Do you have a fistful of last year's water this time of year and this year, or what we're at? Let's see here, there's water funds. So, last year, where are we at here? We were ahead, weren't we?
More than like $3,000.
Yeah, so, but I mean, we're not far off, are we?
If it's 2024, if it's 2025, we're not bringing in as much year-to-date as we were last year.
In water service?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So we're, we're around that compared to.
I see. It's, well, sewer's not as bad as water.
So. Yeah, store fund balance sheet right here, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So here, you are in 2025.
Yeah.
And here you are in 2024, we're not, I can't see that far away, but we're about $60,000 below where we were this time last year.
Yeah, that's the liability, so not what you see.
Yeah, so that's, that better, that's a lot better.
Yeah, equities are always in the liability column. It seems like stocks are an example of equity, but I don't want to have any, but the, the reason they're in liability column is because until you cash them out, you can lose your value in them.
Yes.
So they function as a liability until you sell them, so, so equities are, you know, for the common principle in that particular bracket.
Okay, all right, next, bills for payment.
There he has, had a chance to look at that, didn't he? This, I don't know if it falls into this area or not, but we discussed in a couple previous meetings about the, our mowing and getting a battling mower, and then we, I thought we had approved it, apparently we haven't formally voted on it.
I don't think so, I went back and I watched, and this would have been prior to the first of the year, and I watched the last three meetings, so we're not necessarily current on minutes, and there was a, it was spoken about one time, and you had said that we should start saving money, but there was never a.
Ah, okay. All right, so to review the issue of battling, that is a mowing deck that allows you to drop one side out a little bit further to catch the side of a road, particularly on inclines, to mow safely and to access more from the road instead of risking tipping over a factor, and from my research on the use of them, they hold their, in the farming community, they hold their values really well, you can get one for about $15,000, and that's considered to be a decent price on, this is for something that's used, and brand new ones grow up significantly more than that, and at $15,000 for a decent unit, that will hold its unit, and you can almost consider it to be an asset, a marketable, you know, asset, like we needed to sell it, but we didn't need it for some reason, however we do. So. So, uh, we had, uh, priced some and they were calling in under fifteen thousand, so we went on it, uh, we're gonna act on it and, uh, then at the final call on that, the unit wasn't what was initially represented to be the thing that we were supposed to get, so we had to back out of that. And now we have a, uh, a new unit from what I understand, is that correct, Adam?
Yeah.
And a little bit more than fifteen thousand.
It's sixteen, three eighty with my X source well discounting. Originally it's twenty-four thousand and a, and your warranty.
Okay.
You're up to everything, so what you pay use, you're paying.
Right, so ballpark is sixteen and that puts us over that fifteen thousand dollar threshold for use stuff, uh, just by a bit, that's a brand new unit. So it sounds like it's a good, uh, purchase and the additional value of that is that since it's wider and it allows you to access the roads, which I believe we discussed earlier too, uh, it saves on manpower because you can cut more in less time, uh, and cut more efficiently, quickly, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, it's kind of put to the board where we need to go to approve it. If we're gonna do it, otherwise we'll have to wait again before we process it.
If I had to do that now, I'd be, well, it's really, isn't it?
So, do you have that, uh, statement from that, from, yeah, Davis?
Yeah, it's the email, the email. Oh, I can't email it.
So if there's a way you can present that to us and more. Because I had, you see, with the trucking thing, we received some criticism that, why hadn't we got it yet? Because the reason we hadn't is because we hadn't been able to approve it in a way that we, uh, could match with a seller, a dealer, that you usually sell stuff as quickly as they can. And, uh, so we wanted to get around that this time by approving it first and then we have a unit lined up, which will then, which will be available, I guess, as soon as we vote on it and then, uh, and then, uh, the mowing difficulties will be solved for now. We'll probably cut down on the labor because currently we're using a smaller mower and doing a really good job with, uh, all the lots that we have to, to know if that's going to speed things up with fewer people.
Now, can you actually get that or can you deliver that?
Uh, I think you have to, you know, pick up on the trailer. Legal delivery, I mean.
Uh, you can pull up on a truck, but he will deliver it, but I, I mean, if they want me to come down or you, me and you or whoever come down, look at it and see if that's what they want. You know, like I said, it's a medium duty, but I think that would be sufficient. I mean, we, we don't cut anything bigger, three or four inches, do we?
We've done, we've done that, like.
Bush hog by diameter.
Yeah, I mean, diameter's only like four inches.
But this, this doesn't have a reach and I mean, uh.
They got the, they got the orthical eighty, uh.
Yeah.
Pull behind. And that's a, what, twenty, thirty foot?
It's twenty degree dip and ninety up. So yeah, some jumpers and has actually break hazard lights and other things and it's easily to service, well, it's under warranty, so it'll be under sort of ten years, even a year or two. So.
That helps out with signs of roads turning back.
Yeah, we, we spent a whole day on this one road.
And earlier when we were looking at these day, gear ratio wasn't correct for our tractors because we need a five forty.
Yeah, five forty.
Yeah. This will match.
Yes, the one that we had down there, we're, we gotta change that out, but it would cost a lot more to change it out, too.
Yeah, I mean, and, and it would be hard on the tractor, it would be losing about a hundred RPM while.
But you need like hundred, hundred traction if you want to.
Yeah.
Work right.
With an adapter, you know, so. Yeah, this one, uh, and it's a tank gauge deck, so it's smooth talk and everything. Eric went with me.
They got the change guard, change guard door?
Oh, yeah, brand new change and, uh, this cleat beats the skids, they're replaceable, so it happened, they wouldn't cut them off with a torch and re-weld them. They just unbolt it, but anyone's on they wear.
They got the four over one tire, that air tire.
They're, um, four of the.
Five wheels.
Yeah, five wheels, so. Airplane tires a little bit more, but.
Five wheels, I like that a little, we can get them flat.
I've never worn really one out that bad, so, I mean, the old one had it for twenty-four years. So, and it's seen it work pretty good. But yeah, this will cut, and this will also be like a safety thing too, because once they get, they don't have to get real loaded like down here in school yard, but, you know, the creed and things like that, because you got that wing overhang and then, well, you knock these roads out and then go back behind and just trim up when you need to, so. It's like, do you pay the used price, no warranty, and then get the same price?
And then, wait, copies up, they copy.
Yeah, machines.
All right, so in the meantime, uh.
Kind of a different way to send that.
Yeah.
It doesn't have any numbers.
Oh. Put that down, everything, sorry. Uh, oh, I'm going on a thing, uh, the, you get a wider swath that's cut with conventional mowing with it.
Also correct. Yeah, and it's got different cages, you can put lock pin, lock rings in, so it can't bottom out or anything.
And then on the economics of this, we had, uh, we've received money in, via a purple wave on the sale of our older equipment that we had out, right?
Yeah, we already got that.
And so we're, as a financial stressor, it's not really a factor.
So no tax, money has went to any of these new purchases at all, even though there's some people saying that there's zero tax money going towards the purchase of these things. So you got the spectrum settlement and agreement and then you also got their, you know, other stuff, but that purple wave has been a lifesaver, it really has, so.
Yeah, the big picture beyond that, uh, since we're waiting, it's just that the yard is a lot cleaner than it was. There's less junk in it, it's easier to get around, access stuff and I think, uh, we can, we probably need to get some salvage equipment, you know, lumber or tin or whatever to, uh, put a small, like a link to a shed either. See, one of the corners, not really useful, because you got, you can't put equipment in there, well, because it's so tight and you can't even put gravel or whatever in there, because same reason, see, it really needs to be out another thirty feet so you have a clear shot at it either way, so.
Well, like I said, I never understood why they put it next to your iron beds like that. It shouldn't have been out open.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's easier just to get to it, just even deliveries, it's harder to get solved.
Yeah, I think, and I wouldn't be opposed to, because we remember to use the back gate back there, I wouldn't be opposed to build something next to the, uh, UV room.
Yeah. Because if, you know, when everything goes through with everything, then we should be taking oxidation ditch out and everything.
No, I mean, if you guys put your head together, like, what's the ideal location for it?
I mean, where the belt camels and stuff, where that'd be a good spot for it, because like when we haul slugs out, we've got to have them trucked to be able to maneuver around.
Mm-hmm.
So I would say we're the gassing kids now, but them trying to maneuver, they already have a real time maneuvering in there anyways.
And we can take the aerial down, because they don't use aerial anymore.
So you, like, you just got the line marker, you know, for soccer, you know, we put field marking lines, you know, soccer, whatever, just spray the location, so, uh, we could, if we got a hog or a big post holes for it, decide how big we need to make it. And I don't think, I have a bunch of six by sixes or eight by eights that we could use and then it's just a matter of ten through the top of it, I guess, just some aside, so.
Eight inch hole over here and four concrete here, about three foot.
Oh, you talked about that for the back gate. You said that gate locked?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's always locked.
It's a year.
So the intentions for that was when Billman would come in and get, it was to make a loop, but there was never a driveway, so they had the back, so technically we really don't need it, you know, a second entrance in the back. I mean, if we do down the road, we could go a different one, but as of right now, we don't, we don't need it. I had to use that back gate and haul the earth up right there. I mean, the only thing, we'd have to make sure we don't run into our F1 line or anything. We don't know that a lot, but.
Or our plan to watch Michael, you know, if he has something that he's planning to put.
Well, the way, the way it's going right now, I, I'm not foreseeing that plant, so.
Yeah, what happened?
Huh? I said, as things are going right now, the way we've been talking, I'm not foreseeing that plant no more.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so yeah.
I mean, it all happened, you know, level, you know, that's all.
It's gonna be okay.
Probably works it, yeah.
Okay, so we have the sales sheet here for today's farm supplies and there's a, there's a total of litter price order, which price is it? It's a fifteen foot rotary cutter.
The delivery is from like the distributor, you know, they charge them for eight, three when they bring them in.
So we came sixteen, one twenty-five for this or nineteen?
Together, that's with our, I haven't paid them for the replacements, saw them nowhere. That's all until they got, made it on our fresh bush hog. Because they run around one, I was like, oh, this ain't gonna work, and they showed me another one and there was, I went sort of behind old ice tractor.
Yeah.
Even my worst enemy.
So it's gonna be sixteen thousand then?
Six, yeah, with my, because if I didn't give them my source well discount, nothing more my account, it would have been twenty-one or twenty-two, whatever it is.
Okay, so.
Or save.
Because of the discounts opportunity that you would have, it's reduced to three thousand or four thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
And then the paperwork would be a warranty. Then after, because I went to leagues, John Dear, which is nobody, I mean, I've done online, I mean, probably fifteen competitive bids.
What's her name?
Green paint, any questions? Green paint's expensive too. Especially with John Dear, green paint is very expensive.
So I make a motion that we accept, uh, this offer, uh, put a forward on it for the purchase of a fifteen foot, uh, battling rotary motor, rotary cutter.
Motion made, second by Oliver Bergman, uh, what do you like, real call boat, Alvin Van Dugan?
Yes.
Alvin Van Bergman?
Yes.
Oliver Van Rosenbuehler?
Yes.
All right. All passed, and I would, Austin or Mark, no, because it's in there and we can look at it if we want to, so.
All right.
So for payment, okay. While we don't have, you wanna do the, since we don't have the public forum?
I, I would like just to.
Reiterate on subs?
Just real, um, well, on subs, we, I have, um, a form that has to be signed to change the account ownership, I guess, from April to myself, and that just requires a vote from you saying that it's okay to do that and it has to be signed, of course, but that, that's.
Well, I'd love to, uh, make a motion that we transfer responsibilities to you from April, since she's not over her, like, as ever saying.
I don't know, it's okay.
Motion made, second all fair.
Aye.
And vote. Motion passed. Your name will be replaced in April, where I said, and leave it there. Anything else on the subs?
No, that's all we've done.
Oh, is it credit card, does it come in with a card that I'm gonna pay now?
It does, I, um, I can accept credit card payments through subs for water bills. Um, I, I actually made Tyler do it, so I can see if it, if it were to work. And, um, there is a, um, subs does charge four percent for the use of a credit card or a debit card if you pay through their system.
Does it get paid, uh, are we paying it or is the?
No, duh, or customer card.
So it's transferred to the card?
Yeah.
So, just like, uh, St. John's Holiday, if you pay with certain, certain charge on it, yeah.
So, well, I'm not telling you Tyler's business, but it, it was about five dollars for, for Tyler's bill to be paid with his debit card and his.
Right. And so for our citizens, a way not to incur additional five percent things to give us extra cash?
Or through ACH through the bank.
Okay, good, great.
So that, that's a good option to have. All right. Unfinished business, um.
Do you mind if I just touch on this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, and I won't take long. I had a meeting with the bank, um, and what they're gonna come here and talk to us about next month is, um, making us more efficient as far as, um, our accounting, um, they are, and combining accounts rather than having nineteen accounts, they would combine the accounts that I work in, mostly general water and sewer, so there's less transferring of money from company to company and all be within one, and they're gonna talk to us about that. But the thing that I, um, they also offer direct deposit, um, that, um, everybody has to have a checking account, of course, and I went through and everybody has a checking account, otherwise we have to come up with other options for them. But, um, there is a fifty dollar a month charge to use their direct deposit.
For, uh, in total or?
In total, in total, fifty dollars per month to use their direct. I can still have to do payroll, however, um, I'm not printing checks. I can, um, and I just had order checks for the sewer department and it, it was a hundred and seven dollars for five hundred checks. To order checks to the bank was outrageous, so we would, unlike.
Oh, so for six, so the six hundred dollars, you can do direct deposit versus buying checks?
Yeah, buying checks.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it, it's just us, and they don't have to be signed, so they're already approved when they're direct deposits, so I don't, if somebody's out of town, I don't, and you don't have to wait on me or we don't have to wait on one another for people to get paid. And I can do it from, if I'm not available, if I'm at home or if I'm on vacation, I can still do payroll and everybody still get paid and get a check. But they do have some other things they're gonna talk to us about that will also save some money, um, as far as, um, changing our credit cards to having a, because the credit cards we have right now are a subdivision of First Aid Community Bank, they don't use them anymore, um, and it, it's a way to pay our bills without writing checks, you just write one check to the bank. And they're gonna, I've given them every, all the information they need to go to present to you next month.
And even, they even did a history portfolio.
Yeah, I, and then.
Wherever wasting money, where we should have been saving money in the loss. So. Unless you guys think that, if that's not a good idea or.
I like the other guy's thing.
I mean, just, things are changing, I guess. Those checks aren't cheap, I know that.
Well, they are working with, they can't tell me, of course, but they are working with another small town that, um, is going through the same thing we are. We've got some archaic ways of doing things. Well, we're doing it this way, we have so-and-so said that we should. So, and they are helping them, um, convert their accounts so that there's less accounts, less check writing, making bill paying easier. We can even do credit card machine too that they would give to us, but I, I'm not sure. But I I'm not sure that that, I'll let them do the presentation and make them decide. But I'm very interested in the direct deposit.
Yeah, it's nice. Welcome.
Just simply see that now, anyway.
Yeah. And it just probably makes it easier for QuickBooks too, I'm sure.
Well, payroll is my, payroll is my art, and this is the first part. It's not like, but, um, I do enjoy pay. I do like direct deposit. You'll often get paid sooner when you have direct deposit like midnight, morning of payday. So, you know, it it has its perks, but there is less check writing.
Yep.
And we can say that buying checks. All right, and anything else? Uh, well, we talked about year-to-date warrants or financials. I mean, we're looking better. How's our members? We just, we're behind a little bit?
Um, we, we're behind a little bit, but I think we're catching up. You know, um, the the bills that are coming in now are pretty current. I just paid a final bill for the fire department to get rid of AT&T. So, and we've switched to T-Mobile for internet. And then when the fire department moves on, that that'll be in other savings as far as their telephone and internet service. So we are catching up. Um, we did just get a hefty bill from the auditor that we're gonna have to to work on.
Yeah. But I mean, we we're catching up on bills from October of twenty twenty.
I paid a sales, uh, to the Missouri Department of the Department for, um, a bill that wasn't paid in twenty twenty-two.
Wow.
I mean, it wasn't huge, but it was still, and I've done that twice since March, paid for taxes that are a couple of years old.
I mean, she's went through everything and, I mean, things I thought and I was told that would pay weren't paid. And so she's got it all organized and we are about, you know, we're pretty much caught up. Yeah, we've had to dip in, but we've been staying on everything else. It's kind of offset, balance itself, so.
Well, that's something else that we have less bills coming in when I had the bank talk to you. We're not, we're talking about credit cards and fleet cards for the police department and and Eric. So that they're not char, a charge account up at at BMW. And so, and with the charge account, not that anybody is doing this, but they could buy soda and hamburgers and, you know, they they chose to. But, um, with these fleet cards, um, there'll be restrictions. It's fuel only pay at the pump. So whatever restrictions that you determine that these fleet cards need, that that's what they will enforce. And she is, um, I sent her our credit card bills now and she's gonna come up with a number that our credit limit per month would be, um, in order to pay our bills and do the extra things like I need trash bags. So it eliminates, um, the John Deere credit card, the U M B credit card. It would eliminate all these charge accounts that we have all over town, um, where you're not, you're paying one person.
Right.
Um, would we still use the BMW up here or is it?
Well, they're closed or there's other issues, say sometimes they're found somewhere or something's wrong. That means we're not like stuck because we don't have the Casey cards anymore. They kind of just let that. So guys are gonna have to pay out of pocket. They get fuel, say they're working, they don't ride or anything. And they gotta drive, they gotta pay for it or else they get the gas, so.
So the police car, that, like, you can use that anywhere?
We can use it anywhere.
Okay, so they can still use here?
They can use there, but Tyler's in St. Jen and money needs fuel. He can get fuel at roads or Casey's or whatever or.
So they'll have it fully towed, I'm sure, and all that good stuff and mileage you have to enter and all that good stuff.
Yeah, and the board would control, is, would control the limits on those.
You guys got any questions on that or anything you wanna contribute? Or any better ideas on that?
No, that sounds good.
It's kind of like a camp building.
Streamlines things.
Yeah, it is streamlined, whatever. Anything else on here?
Oh, how's our surveys looking?
Our surveys, um, I, Doc helped me and it was, I appreciated so much. Um, uh, he got in contact with Maiko Management and we got nine out of, I think there's only ten full appointment apartments up there. She said we're only missing one, so there must be two empty apartments up there. So we got nine of those, um, today. And she's very helpful and I do have her information if we ever need to return it. But right now we are, for D N R, we are up to seventy-five.
Whoa.
Surveys, uh, and thirty-one C N O RPC surveys, and we're, they've only been out for two weeks.
Wonderful.
That's nice compared to the last one.
Now, uh, regarding the makeup and, she, there's an issue with keys being available for emergency services and stuff like that in those units. Did she talk to you about that?
No, she did not.
Right. But Adam mentioned to me that there was no master key or something like that, so, uh, and I brought it up to her. She said that she also got a, a snub like that, so you might want to circle back and ask her about that after.
I have her phone number and her email address. She was very helpful.
Yeah, she's very helpful.
Another thing with Maiko Management, one of the residents came down here and she doesn't have the capability of calling nine one one. I don't know why, but she asked for, um, she had a lift assist the other day and wasn't able to get a hold of anyone.
So is she, um, S S P I or S S A?
I'm sure.
Then, um, the provider with the free phone, does she have any help doing it?
I can give you her name when we, um, figure it out, but she came down and asked specifically for the police department and the fire department. Um, and I gave her those phone numbers and she, I don't know why she doesn't have to give a bill and call nine one one or she could call her here or Tyler directly, but I did, I gave all the numbers.
She had to go to a resident to use a phone.
So she doesn't have a phone app?
We, we got called up for it, but she had to go to.
So they don't even have it, or you're like a public phone to use your emergency phone, really?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
You clearly did that out.
Well, that's kind of scary, specifically because the clientele that live up there, they need to have access to emergency services for sure.
So.
All right, well, that's good.
Yeah, and that, uh, new business, um. So Mike called me, or from Harlan Engineering, and between me being with, being our, being all these people, speaking with them. So, uh, submit a resolution, I went ahead, well, I was up late, I filled out another grant for drinking water, but this time not wastewater. Drinking water, um, is a engineering report grant, kind of like we did with the wastewater. So I went in and just submitted it, and even though we don't have our surveys in, uh, I talked to somebody and based on what we got going on, they considered us disadvantaged, and so we just got to work approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars more to get started on the water project and that pump system that we were talking about and everything else. So I just gotta get this resolution, just authorizing me under our six forty that says that, um, to be able to receive the grant on behalf of the city so they can put our Q out like we did on that and hold it for three days and pick whoever engineer scores out the best, you know, like we did before.
So this is somebody allocated for engineering work?
Engineering work is figure out why and what can make our water better and be self-sufficient away from possibly going to other venue, you know, other vendors. Well, not necessarily vendors, kind of see if we're able to go on our own. Or what is our end game here? Or do we need this? And the projects that were originally funded, like the the pressure pump station that's sitting there with the parts in it. I mean, there's so many unfinished unknowns. I mean, this addresses all of that in my, our engineers are very familiar with it.
Yeah.
And but we still have to do the process. Mike hasn't been involved. He just sent it to me and I filled it out and shot it back. And they approved it, so, um, there will be no eighty percent on this one, so there will be no cost out of the city. It'll be a hundred percent funded at all, so we don't have to pay nothing. Um, so that's why there's a resolution number on here, uh, for you guys. It should be, is there one to tag it?
By the way, I'm just putting it right here.
It's pretty much like a resolution.
Do you want to go approve the resolution?
Yeah, you have to do a real call. You do that through it, then, then you're gonna have to adopt the resolution. So I can send that into D N R, then D N R is like, cool. Then we sell for some more with these movers, so movers, and then money goes through there. We just put our Q in the, um, paper and get a certificate of location. And then we do a scoring, pick our engineer, and we're off running again.
So I make a motion to approve resolution number ten eleven, authorize mayor to apply for our S F one six forty to apply to receive grant for drinking water and engineering report grant.
I'll say anything.
Motion made, second by Alderman Rosenwood, Ropolbo for adoption. Alderman?
I.
Duda. Alderman Bergman?
Yes.
All right, Alderman Rosenwood?
Yes.
All right. We have adopted and passed that resolution for record to enter into the city files. So, which is a good thing, as I just said, the one, or you got the G I S one.
We're working on that one.
So, like, the other one was G I S one. I don't, how much was that one? And it's gonna give us like several long-term G I S data. So, I mean, there's.
So right now, we're, we're, um, Clayton, uh, contacting me. We started GPS and, well, uh, he said he's glad I'm around because he wouldn't know what valve went where, uh, doing the money, uh, diamond maps. So we only got not even half the town done yet, so we're still working up. We're bringing quick, that's what we're working on, but me and him on a schedule, trying to bump time forth. He's, Clayton's actually in college, so he's got certain times, which it's in the process, so they can't, like, nothing can happen. So anyways, I mean, it's going, so, uh, soon as we get it done, it'll all be on diamond maps. Heck, a lot easier looking at than looking at these. We can actually sit in our vehicles and get on our phone or whatever and actually look if we're looking for a wireline or a valve.
So you can replace it and you can change it too.
And it, and it actually got it on there too, the year date and all that, that it was installed and stuff too on that. And then the other thing is too, is when you're on diamond maps and like on my iPhone, I can actually set it up and go walking toward it and then it'll show me going to it and being.
Oh, wow.
So if it's buried, we know where it's at. So, uh, I mean, with the land, erosion over top of. Uh, we're trying to, uh, actually with the sewers up too, uh, right now we're doing the water. Uh, off the line, about going back and doing the sewer and putting in diamond maps. Uh, anyways, but if everything goes the way we're hoping it goes, we ain't gotta worry about them valves no more. So that'd be great, but, um, that's what we're trying to look forward to. But if it don't happen within the next couple of year or year or so here, showing that things are not perceived. We talked about putting that in diamond maps for like our grinder systems with the shut-off valves in the yard. Uh, and we've had multiple of them. We had to dig up and find them. So anyways, I'm, but, uh, and they still work. But, but yeah, that's, it's great. I'm, I'm glad we're actually doing something like that. Coming down here, we're gonna do paper maps. They can be off a little bit or I like the diamond map because, I mean, you can stand, like, it shows your pinpoint and where that's at and you can walk around all of it.
So who has access to that?
You guys, we'll have no access to it.
We'll all have, have access to it. So I, Adam, you, you guys can get it on your phone or whatever and access it. Um, I mean, basically it's gonna be the guy that's working mutually, you know, on everything. And Jeff can actually do it too. I mean, it's just.
So it's not just something that's just prioritized only for you?
No, it's, it's for.
It's very public, right? Because your engineering never had in our, never had where the lines were. This time now, every town, every engineer, you can get it on the map.
Now that you have it on there, where I, I think Adam, I think, actually the whole city administration can do it. Um, there's a code you gotta put in your phone and everything. What it is, is so, say, for instance, we put a random hydrant in tomorrow and we already did this, we can go back and GPS that and we can actually do it off our phone, GPS it too and GPS that location and that point. So that way it's, it goes straight to diamond map. So after, after the GPS is done, each point we do, within, within a couple hours, it, it comes up to the map.
And D N R gets the queries, so they kind of go hand in hand with D N R. So, and we had some money left over from this, that, the other grant. Um, so he asked me if we'd be interested. I said, well, yeah, that could be beneficial. So let it go to waste or go back, might as well use it through the diamond map, so we have access to this.
I, I have a question. Will that help with meter reading at all?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right now, well, here's the thing about it right now. Right now, we're doing the valves and the hydrants and the main line valves. I talked to Mike about that, going back through, because like on these maps, you can see the meters, but they're not pinpoint location or giving the footage or anything. So the thing about it is what we can do is with that diamond map, and even on your system with subs, you can, um, like, so when we start doing that and we pinpoint them in the, in the, uh, the, whatever you call it, uh, to write stuff down, um, we can write that in there and then whenever you hit that, it'll show you it's north at the road four foot or whatever. And you can put it on your subs too, and that'll way whenever you like, if you do a work order or anything, then it'll show that there, where that location is.
Well, and we can put it on the, on the tablet too and help the guys.
Yeah, so they can click on that and it'll show exactly and lead it to them.
Yeah, it'll put right on, and I mean, the thing about it is I can walk to every meter, but when you have people that's, um, and they respond, I mean, it's hard to, I understand. I mean, that's just like with them, you know, trying to find, uh, one at the C N A ball and they didn't know it was there. And, you know, I woke her up too and they're like, oh, we didn't know it was by the hydrant. Yep, and it's by the hydrant.
Well, yeah, well, the old map shows where the old location was, but it's, uh.
That'd be great.
And I can't remember what it costs us a year, whatever.
Uh, with the money we have left over, I think we'll get a couple or a few years of it with them charged.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, it'd be good.
It's not much. It's like ninety dollars a month or something.
But what I was saying about that diamond map is where we can turn around and say, if we have a line, we move or anything like that. We ain't got an engineer here to pinpoint right off the bat with a GPS unit. We can actually go in and edit that line. So if we find the line, we can edit that line on diamond maps. That's only, that's only with, if you have the code. Anybody can get on diamond maps and look at system, but as in us, if we move a line or we abandon a line, we can actually put it on that graphic map. That way the next person looks at it or whoever, they're like, oh, that's abandoned. We ain't gotta worry about it. Because like up here in Fourth Street, uh, where we paid, uh, not this year, but a few years ago, there's valves there that is dead. And they never paid over them and they never capped them or anything, like poor stuff in them to show they was dead. So we got numerous valves in the intersection, but the new line valves and full line valves, so we really don't need that. And they were supposed to be abandoned whenever we had the, um, new line activated, whenever we put it, charged it and put it in circuits and everybody started hitting water, but they were supposed to abandon them and they wouldn't have been. And so if you don't know what valve you're turning up there, you might be turning an old valve and it's not doing nothing. So, uh, so what I plan on doing here right now is hopefully, uh, we're gonna take pieces of A B C, paint it red, drop them in it. So that way if we do pay again for Adam or Eric or whatever, I'm not here to turn valve off and we need to turn that second panel off. They're not just turning on a valve and, you know, and losing water or whatever. And, you know, and losing water or whatever.
Are the abandoned lines pressurized, or?
No, they're dead. They, it actually got cut and severed, but the thing about it is, is not fair, you know, it got cut and capped or whatever they did down there. Um, but they did not abandon, whenever they taped over that. We didn't know which valve was which, and anyways, cause thanks to people. Um, and so it was kinda like, uh, which valve was which, but like us sat here whenever that was being controlled and stuff. We knew it was valve which, but it's just a point, there's no reason to have a open can sitting up on top of the paper. It'd be, it's just more money, you know, putting risers and stuff, so.
And that, that meter, I don't know if it's a meter or a shut-off, like in my yard, going towards the former boat house. You know, like, right at the tree line there, there's a, there's a line around, do you think that's, or is it?
So I think that's live, if I'm not mistaken. Um, everybody, uh, which we can go back and files whenever we started up doing this, everybody had to fill out the rideaway. Whoever filled out a rideaway paper, they got part service. So whoever owned that house before, you know, before you did or whatever, they might have, they signed that rideaway and they went ahead and tapped. Or, you know, tapped it to the.
But, no, but I saw too, there's one in the yard, you know, like, uh, forty feet from the porch or from that.
The meter center is in it, actually.
It's the water meter that?
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah, so.
And then there's another one on the other side of the boat house.
Yeah, so where your house is, in that section here, that was a trailer that's up there.
Oh.
I think that one was dead because McAllister bought that all the right period of time, and he only had the one service to the house. And then, you know, without, uh, that one was actually alive. And then the other house on the other side that you own, that's there by, um, Ristler's. That one, I think, is alive. And I think they had to tap that line, because whoever owned it at the time signed the rideaway paper.
Yeah, so, we're moving along, um, we also got things caught up with Michael, didn't we? So the company came in, um, to finish an inflammatory, just getting everything finished up, coming to meet us. And this popped up, we, you know, have that water grant. There's a lot of people saying, oh, grants don't do this, grants don't do that. Well, it's doing a lot more than it has in the last four years, so. And I hate turnout free money, you know, that helps us out.
No, this is.
We're disadvantaged, you know, especially in our surveys, I'm, I'm happy with that compared to the last one, I really am, I mean.
Yep.
So, I mean, there's some naysayers out there, but it's not, we're trying to get your personal information, the more you get, but if they don't do this, and then they complain we raised the rate ten percent, that's on them if they didn't participate. I mean, we can't force their hand, but.
Yeah, just for the records, considering films with this, is that we're trying to get our water and sewer stuff fixed, so we can get a reduction in the. I hope that we will have a reduction in our rates, I can only guarantee it of course. But water can go down, sewer can go down too, so. So the, the participation of our residents is the key for this, so we can get these interviews done, and then other stuff may pop up. So it requires a group effort, we need everybody's assistance for that too.
And it also goes for parks, it goes for roads, it goes for many different things that we get through, right? That, so, I mean, God is the limit, but they gotta be willing to, you know, everybody complains, but they, you know, they don't wanna be part of the solution, they wanna be the problem, or, you know, we got old heads saying it don't work. Well, it does work because it's worked everywhere else. And actually, Michael told me last Friday, you know, and I'm not, it's like a nice statement, but if everything goes as planned, we may be the only town in Missouri he's ever seen to do it. Water and wastewater infrastructure, total rebuild and save and lower rates in the whole state of Missouri. And it'd be like a pilot program town, really, so. But, we'll see just how everything falls into place, so. But, that's all I got, I mean, I'm happy we got seventy-five in the surveys, so, so, I mean, do we need?
Hundred and twelve.
Oh, we're getting there, we're getting there, so. Yeah. When is it done? Is there a cutoff date?
Um, and I do believe that the SEMO RPC surveys are good for four years. So if something comes up through SEMO RPC that requires a survey, we're, as long as we meet our criteria with the number of residents that do it, um, we won't have to do it again for four years.
As well as our census will be good for next ten, the next census, so. We get a hundred percent, and a hundred percent for the next ten years, so you don't have to pay nothing.
Yeah.
So, alright, that is, okay. Alright, um, yeah, I had, I guess, Mayor, my meeting with the fire protection district, Frankie was there. Pretty much, one way guys discussed, we went ahead and, uh, you know, I told the district, I guess, chairman.
No, he's switching to the chief and.
Are they chairman or the board?
Yeah, he's talking to the board president.
I don't know if you guys have chairman or, I don't know, you know. Cause it's our first meeting, so hopefully, I don't know if, you know, if they're getting the building, the land, the apparatuses and all that, but if they were to leave and all that stuff, and with all the other legalities, you know how hell that is. That if they were to leave, the, the property and land would revert back to the city for use. I mean, it could be community use, it could be anything, you know, just so it doesn't go to waste. So, I don't know if she's got anything drafted up yet for it.
She's working on it.
Is she doing?
She's still working on everything, so.
Okay, I don't know, I, I, we've, you've been busy, I've been busy.
Well, I missed the one last night, but I know, it's unworking.
So, um, so that's where we're at on that. I thought about, cause we use T-Mobile, they got what's called asset tracking through our current company. And it's like forty dollars and we pay for it, and I don't think it's that much a year. And it's just a GPS thing, it's like, kinda like finding your phone or whatever. So I don't know if you guys wanna look into that, if it is, or just like some of our higher end stuff we got. Just so, there's people out there saying other things and saying this, that they can't say one thing or another.
What, um, I'm sorry?
Like the tracker, it's like an air tag for.
Oh, is that free, or is that, uh?
We get a reduced price, it's, I think, I mean, if I bought it personally, I think it was fifteen dollars.
For the year?
Um, the, for the year, I think for the year, I looked at how much it is, but it really isn't that much, because it works same thing for, it's an app on that, so.
Well, then I would get the specifics on that.
I just wanted to take your brains, that's what it was, so, since we got some higher end assets, you know.
Well, I mean, the larger equipment, mowing decks and things like that do get stolen, you know, so it may not be a bad idea, uh, to handle that. And we have had, factually, equipment stolen, we've had.
Yeah.
Cold saw stolen, the.
Water, water, that blew away.
Fire department stuff has been disappeared, so, uh.
You know, we make, it's, it may help with insurance too, so.
I don't know, but we need to.
Yeah, we're looking.
We have security for it too, because we had almost nine months, we had a big hole in the side of the fence and the back door wasn't locked. And if someone went in.
Help yourself.
Yeah.
Which they could really, it is something very bad.
So that, and that brings up another matter, that those buildings tried to be secured, our fence has been repaired, but.
The doors are one of them.
It's a part of the effort to jump the fence, so.
Yeah. So we got that for, okay, Frankie, you got that completed audit, physical for you guys, just take over and read. And then, we'll schedule a work session, go over it for our next fiscal budget year.
Okay.
So, we don't have it goes, I'm not gonna sit here and be like, it's the same every year, don't read it, blah, 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 blah. Yes, it changes every year, but this year really changed, so.
And you can keep it too, by the way, but I have six more of them, I'm pretty sure.
Okay. We're definitely getting our money for it, right? And, uh, yeah, but that's size one, you guys have a, they came in. Uh, five, uh, anything, you guys have anything else? The, any ideas, any thoughts?
Uh, well, I mean, regarding this budget thing, this is, I mean, we have it, it's a matter of public record, isn't it?
Yes, so public wants to see it, they're gonna see we published it twice a year, and also didn't interfere with this for years.
So that leads to, I guess, address and then have a copy available for someone to be able to read or other.
Yes.
I certainly have one.
So, because I, I would be delighted if they did come down and go through it.
Yeah.
So does anybody have anything new, or, I know we all been busy, so.
Uh, well, it's a small thing, and it's, I mean, uh, Fritz pondered, you know, and, and his own time, he came in. We had some poplows and he filled them with gravel, he called me and asked if it was okay to do it, I said sure. But then they, uh, those poplows are getting worse around the bend, uh, going up to Mary Eclipse, so. Uh, as I understand, there's some issues with hydraulic pressure underneath it that bubbles out of the poplow, or water bubbles out of the poplow, I guess. But there's a way to, we had to put something temporary there, I don't care if it's, it's not gonna work long term right now, but it needs to be, to drop a bit.
I need a.
So the, the gravel part, when it rains and so, it drives over, it's just gonna kick back out. What, and plus, right there, that was just chicken seal.
Yeah.
So technically, we actually need to turn around and put all the bigger asphalt, at least two inches later across that. And anyways, maybe grind it down or whatever, put too much later.
When I met with SEMA, they did an evaluation of it, like it should have culvert cross in there. Set up the grade, it's just, you know, it worked for time being, but.
Yeah, but we're not gonna get a culvert in there in the next two months.
No.
I've filled it up now, because, you know, I assume you'll plant a tree.
That's one of the things, there have been just like the right side structural leak. I'm sorry, what were you saying?
Well, I was gonna say, put land circles trees in that plant, poplows.
Well, you want me one of them?
You gotta have cake and a candle.
But no, yeah, because SEMA looked at it, the representatives when they come to town with it the other day, mentioned things like that in the park, and I haven't looked at that. They don't understand why the rock side was never gavined in and kinda shorted up, because it's kinda leaving its strength on that side by their analysis.
Yeah, there's a, the, that big culvert that they put in the seven thirty road has a, it's got a huge drop off, uh.
No, they don't, come on, they don't, nice day.
Between the culverts and that little, that residence bridge, I mean, there is a hole. If you go off the side of that road, you're gonna eat that bridge.
Didn't they have this chat put around it?
It's riprap, it's loose, and just past it, there's nothing, so if the wheel goes off of it, you're gonna, how's the pavement holding? That's, that's, uh, watching my way.
But the other thing, you said it was walnut shoot area, I don't know what it cost, I thought we had, I thought we still had a little bit left over. I don't know what cost to actually do it from walnut going into the turn of that bridge.
We have some, but the problem is, it's getting worse and worse, it's gonna be all stripped because there's that iron clad mix in it. And Jokers was the cheapest, I'm trying to fix that, and they were gonna wedge it, we're shut down that hill. So we didn't have to do any culvert work, you know, so we're EMSS and fire trucks could actually get by without stopping, so. But, I, we have coal patch, we can go.
Oh, we got, it's right there, into that where it starts.
Yeah.
There's valves right there underneath that, so don't cover that, look, we gotta, I gotta find them. I might have to salt cut it or something, they're getting into.
Are they, are, they already asphalted over?
Well, it's asphalt, they're, they're, when they put the new little bit of layer of asphalt in there, they're there, the top of it, when they put that rock in that chicken seal, it's actually the valves are back into that just a little bit. And that's the main, number two main line valve, so.
So, alright.
I mean, we do, we still have, I think, some chroma oil.
We have some, but we're gonna do the whole thing, fill that, you know, that, and put lit holes. And we're gonna have a good, nice day, what if it rain, and we can actually go in and shut that down partially.
Well, technically, you're able, in a way, you're supposed, they say you can actually dump that into a water puddle, puddle of poplows.
I call it.
Well, that's where I got pulled, but, I don't know, but.
Because I've tried that, like.
I'm gonna try it, but.
Like I cut out here, I did for you, took four bags, filled that down four inches, so I mean, it, it goes quick, so. But we can, Doc, wait to do that, you said.
Yeah, put it on our to-do list, probably do a to-do list, and that'll go in there.
It's the appropriate order.
Uh, Sharpie, alright, Sharpie, alright.
Alright, getting ready to lock.
Yeah, departmental reports, emergency management, like I said, I met with SEMA. We went over different things, because I talked to Hank Belker, and then, um, I guess, Felix was like, yeah, I guess they did have damage and, and all of that. So I met with them, uh, waiting here back, cause, you know, St. Louis got hit, Edwards kinda got hit. So we're kinda hit and miss here. Uh, spoke with the insurance adjuster, he's on the road too, trying to get back with Mo Firm, so we're trying to figure out what to do with all that stuff too. So we're putting it apart, but the park is totally maxed out. I know that for sure, he told me that, but it's just everything else is getting in order in the plant with the high flow and inflection. So I gotta have an engineer re-jump in and explain how. A fifty-year-old mechanical plant that shouldn't have retired thirty years ago is still working and, you know. And that's what their argument is gonna be. So, Michael needs to help me with that, so it's Vanvitter, cause they did a bid on it, which was about hundred twenty. Hundred twenty seven thousand dollars for the repairs and these.
And that's just for the rivers?
Yeah, that's for rivers.
That's not including the UV?
The UV was about sixty but thousand, and then, that's not kinda the structural part, really, it's good, so, it's bad. Alright, um, Joe, you got anything?
Yeah, definitely. I got with, uh, meeting all of the, up to St. Louis, you know, we were talking last month about them setting sirens off when the very, what they? He said, no, that, that's not right. He said he will come down, if we set up a meeting with nine one, he will come down and explain that to us, okay? So, um.
I sent an email, but I haven't heard back yet.
You make phone calls, man.
Trust me, I make a lot of phone calls.
Yeah, but, uh, so I, that's one thing I, great, talking to that. Okay, another thing I, I'm using this last month, but I forgot these. I went and purchased four, you have two of those radios that'll donate to the city for, like, we got flood or something, we got people working in different places.
Like we used to have in there, told them one. Is there anything else going on, I mean, did we get a confirmation on that funnel, that wedge?
The one out there over the island? I, I haven't heard anything for sure, but I know that system went over and it, they had a tornado on Illinois side from that, so.
I didn't know if you had a confirmation, I was just wondering, cause I mean, the damage we have here is pretty, I mean, the park was trees, some just twisted themselves, so, but. Alright. Police department, uh, Zen?
Hi, there, do you have a update on the first? Yeah, uh, so there was fifty total calls for service last month. Um, a lot of it was traffic stop, normally a couple trespassings that I've got Mary Eclipse, that ended up being resolved, so. Been pretty busy last week or so, I know myself and Frankie, Bolton, there was three car accidents in one day. One of them was a pretty bad one, rollover crash, Frankie knows. One of them was a pretty bad one, rollover crash, Frankie knows more about that. Had a pretty significant arrest Sunday night. That was, that was something, uh, that was taken care, that person is actually not allowed in the city limits at all.
That's, that's amazing.
Yeah, yeah.
Good, we don't need those type of people.
The judge ordered this person to not come within city limits at all, uh, part of their bond condition, so, uh, hopefully, no more issues at.
Alright, good, and then you, uh.
How's your?
County, county, oh, no.
Interesting.
Okay, let's wait, finish your thing and check in between, you guys gotta go.
Should be alright, um, that's all I know.
And then also, you, you turned in a resignation, uh, gave us two weeks notice, because you had taken another position someplace, so.
Yeah, yeah, that is, uh, that's very good, I don't know if you wanna talk about that now, or?
Well, just briefly, because I think, uh, the board has to vote to accept your.
Okay.
Yeah, well, you had the, yeah, right, so that's only reason to bring that up at this point, so.
Okay.
So, uh, yeah, I'm with you, alright, um, Tyler, submitted, do you have that one? You have the copy, do you, you want, you don't want it probably?
Yes.
Okay, there's the original, okay. So you tagged there, you presented this letter of, of resignation of the plan, you know, given some time, two weeks notice, uh, most things are different. But, uh, at that point in time, uh, Dennis Conker, accepting his resignation, and it's up to you guys to make a motion and a second vote on.
So, first off, thank you for your service, uh, and your time here, and, uh, appreciate all the work you've done, and, uh, I'd make a motion to accept, uh, your, uh, resignation. For a quick decision to the chair of the board.
You had a motion, did we have a second?
A second.
Motion made second, got Alderman, Bourbon, and all fair?
Aye. Aye.
And eight votes. Alright. Good.
Thank you.
On your way.
Didn't come, like, I tried to, uh, wanted to stay on here as well, but it was just gonna be conflict of interest or anything, so. I'd like to thank everyone for the opportunity that you've given me, um, I know I got a lot of work, still, still gonna be around, though.
Excellent, we enjoyed it.
And I'm mad at you.
Well, alright, I'll bring some more waters.
Who's gonna fill the fridge? We take turns, we take turns.
I guess, uh.
That's life, that's how.
Work nine, five, oh.
Tyler, do I drink specific water?
What laws?
Smart water laws, that volcano water.
Alright.
Fancy water.
We drink goozy water. Goozy, goozy.
Oh, this is goozy water, I'm like, okay.
Spring water.
Alright, fire department, uh, Alderman, Gatsy, Bourbon, do you have anything?
I do not, Frankie, is there anything?
Yeah, um, so, had a total of twelve calls this month, uh, eight medic, one mutual aid call for St. Jan, um, two motor vehicle accidents on our part. There was three of them, we would have to.
Marycliff.
Uh, and then, um, uh, fire alarm. Any issues, uh, I spoke with Adam, we're trying to get him, uh, paperwork resolved, uh. So, uh, we had a discrepancy on one of our titles, uh, for a truck, um, the title that Goose Creek, uh, handed over to me was actually for a vehicle that. They had a rollover in, which I didn't know they'd given me that one, and I thought it was that title for the whole time. Uh, and we got the VIN number off the truck, I gotta have that title to submit to them, to the attorney and stuff. Um, the other thing is, too, is they, uh, uh, I know we got the building specs and everything, I gotta have that for the insurance purposes. Which we got the MoFirm part, where we got the value of it, it's just I gotta have the dimensions of it for the, yeah, so we gotta get that too. And then the other thing, and I appreciate you guys for, uh, uh, letting go of everything to, um, for the district, district appreciates it a hundred percent too. Which we still, you know, we're still gonna have our fire service and do our thing down here like we do now, it's just gonna be a little different. Different commanding, you know, commanding officer, so, um, I'm not big, the big chief no more, so, I don't care, but, uh, I, I, I still got the department, but I, I have. Not you guys, we're, we're having board now, over me too, so, uh, same way here, um, which, uh, I know there's gonna be a lot more extended training, uh, throughout the month and stuff too now, uh, you know, because of funding. Uh, I know here, we didn't have the funding to send the political school, uh, could, you know, and everything, but now they have the opportunity, so there ain't no backing out of anything now, so. I'd like to get everybody on the department, uh, up to my level, I mean, I already, um, I know we have some that don't have the funds to do it themselves, but, uh, hopefully this gives them the achievement to do it, so. But like I said, we're still here, we're still, we still fight fires, um, I mean, I've talked to the district, you know, since we're fire department, we're with the district, uh, always first. Uh, it's supposed to go into effect, not unless some changes, we might have to move it down the road, I don't know yet, but as of right now, it's always first, so. The other thing is too, is I know we, you know, for legal burns and stuff like that, it probably still, you know, uh, happen like that, uh, you know, I mean, we still inside the vicinity of it, so. An officer called us for a legal burn, we'll still put it up on, or whatever, I mean, you guys take your fire codes, you probably have to discuss that with the district, so.
Probably under investigated, wouldn't it, for you guys and your district, and you would justify.
Yeah, and, and that's, and that's another thing, you have to talk to the chief and district chief up there, and, and the board, uh, to see what allegations we have to do. Say you got, you know, like we have orders now, we're under, you know, how that would work, you know, for fire purpose wise, I mean, so. I know there's gonna be a lot of changes, uh, not doing, you know, the community, helping the community out, this is gonna be a lot of changes, uh, throughout, you know, overall, so. And so, so it, it helped us out tremendously, and it helps you guys out tremendously too. But we're still here for this, I mean, personally, this coming for me, I mean, I'm sure the district too, but, I mean, we're still here to do anything you guys need to do. I mean, I'm, uh, we have a weather event or anything, so, and I'm still here, I'm, I'm sure my guy got to you up there, so. I mean, we just have to discuss some things overall with the district, how role plays are gonna play out here, and like that, so. Another thing is, we're trying to, uh, uh, trying to, um, recruit more firemen. I got a couple of them now looking at right now, but I mean, we have to turn everything over to the district, if we do get new people on or whatever, we got to, they got to fill out application. Uh, I know the application's a little bit different now, I think there are gonna be a lot more process in applications than what we used to do, um, I know when we're talking about, um, you know, uh, agrarian cadets more thoroughly, and then, um, uh. Might be, you know, taking a direct test or coming home and stuff like that, I don't know yet, but we're, we're. And if you do that, the insurance, I know it's cheaper, like, your insurance is a lot cheaper, you know, and stuff like that, so hopefully, hopefully it works out.
The, in town, do you re, uh, hire or recruit from, do you guys live in town?
Uh, so, it'd be in town, out of town, within the vicinity, I mean, we're, the county's a full district now, so, but, I mean.
So that'll change, so.
Not maybe now, somebody living up at.
Where's last time?
You know, Kenzie, him, him wanting to be on the fire department out here.
Yeah.
Uh, I do got one firefighter, he was living in the vicinity, and then he had to move, but he's still with the department, and he does a dang good job for the.
Yeah, that's a big loss, sir.
Anyways, we talked about that, he's sticking with us.
Is he?
Um, yeah, he's a, he's a little bit higher than me on, uh, on achieve, on certifications, uh, he's actually going to school right now, and hopefully graduating, and he's gonna be a fire investigator. So that helped the department out tremendously, that helped with grants, stuff like that, and basically, he does the job of a fire marshal plus. So anyways, I'm, uh, so if we have a marshal in there or anything, he can actually see that, I mean, I can see it too, but his certification says a little bit more than mine, so, um, but. I don't have the funding like you guys. He's on a full time fire department, so they pay for his, uh.
I'm happy certification, I'll maybe wouldn't be too many more, I don't like.
But he's still kind of on the house, I don't know, he was gonna buy, um, uh, Glenn and then that other person, I'm on it, I was like, well, I'm on that one.
He's trying to buy everybody, that mess, that, that time.
Yeah.
We call that house up there, where they.
Oh, the old Hudson house?
Yeah, now they make a, they, uh.
Airbnb?
Airbnb, and then tell them buddy, so. Yeah.
Yeah, so anyways, yeah, so hopefully everything goes good, we'll get the paperwork down, uh, the seventeenth of next month, you guys wanna know, or next month. Next week, maybe Wednesday, at, um, I think it starts at seven, if I remember right, um, they have a big meeting up there, it's, it's gonna be a fire district meeting. Anybody who wants to know any information, firemen, stuff like that, more than welcome to sit in and listen. Uh, I know, I think Adam, we got Adams up there, we had our first actual board meeting, and we was going through a lot of things, so it took forever to get through it. But, um, the attorney was going step by step, she was basically the one running, uh, uh, the meeting at first, uh, get everybody on the same track, and now, this, it'll be the official, big, big meeting, and, you know, uh. Uh, the second one, that's official with the board members and the chairman and stuff, so. But yeah, so anyways, that's, uh, all I have on fires, alright?
Cool.
Alright. Hey, I'm waiting on, um, back on the good streak, that's it, everybody. Trade department, Doc?
Good, great, discussing poplows. Now by the water tower, I got rock distributed on both sides, we just need to rake it and pack it down.
Uh, water, and wastewater side, um, well, Frankie, I don't know what sort of that's been.
So anyways, I'm, uh, with the recent storm and stuff, uh, you know, the twelve days of rain that we got, all at once, uh, with that, my, I think twelve hour period, twenty four hours, or whatever it was, um, uh. I think every, everybody in the whole county and, uh, other cities on outskirts always had the same problem, but, uh, with the infrastructure the way it is down in the wastewater plant, um, you know, the rotors acted up. We got one at the very, basically almost totally out of now, and with it being summertime, we're trying to hopefully get this resolved, so we can get that issue resolved, um, uh, you know, so we don't have to come out of, like, as you say, our pocket, you know. Because of Mother Nature's, uh, course of what she wanted to do there, so. Um, that, the rotor stuff, uh, the, we're trying to get that in line, um, the other thing is, is I think, uh, with our lift station down here that do the decaying on, uh, we open. Open, uh, grates and stuff on our, uh, I mean, we can't close the grates on our holding bins, um, where the effluent water runs back, or, you know, the decaying water runs back, but. With that much flow, it kinda messed up our pump, kind of our lift station, it pumps, and then a dump pump, and then a pump, and a dump pump, and so, I think it's just overwhelming itself too, too hard, so that's what we're trying to. Uh, we got a pump down there, I'm trying to see if that's actually the same category pump, uh, that we can actually install in down there. Uh, I got bandit vendors, and I'm talking to you right now, uh, on that, because they dealt with the miners so long before us and stuff, I'm making sure with them. Um, the other thing is too, is, uh, Heather, um, uh, the samples and stuff, uh, we had to replace the, we've had dumb readings on the OD, or DO, sorry, DO. So, we, um, it was kinda throwing me off, they're scaring me, um, not scaring me, and then threw to me, and I were, I thought I was gonna contact BNR, but it was, um, uh. Things were lower than what we should have been and stuff, and we came to find out it was actually our eye, and it needed to be calibrated, so, um, talked to Hatch, asked him how to do it, they, um, uh. Ran it to the core, recalibrated, so now we're back up in the three, you know, the low, or two, you know, on our DO, so, we're good on that now, um, I was trying to, I thought we had a pickup, somebody was. Dumping stuff, shouldn't be dumping in our system, and it was lowering our DO down, and, uh, you know, stuff like that, so, um, but it's all good. Um, the water side, um, I'm getting ready to do flushing, uh, uh, to get that done, start flushing the dead ends, actually, we're gonna start pouring water from one tower to the other. Uh, been having a few issues, nothing, uh, to make concerns, uh, maybe staying on top of it, but our, uh, level of chlorine at the tower is good to my specs, but then whenever we get out to the other tower. We're losing, you know, chlorine content, you know, our residual on our chlorine. Um, we're still staying up there where we need to be, but we should be about the same here, and we are up there, um.
Is that from a leak?
Huh?
Is that from a leak?
No, it's not from a leak, so what's happening is there's bio, um, uh, residual inside lines of towers. Basically, what happens is, is, um, uh, it's a film that's on the pipes, it's in the towers.
A biofilm?
Yeah, biofilm, so anyways, in the, it's in the, it's in the towers and stuff, and, uh, with this kind of weather, it gets worse than, you know, algae, anything like that, uh, causing it, um, uh. Which our back teeth has been great, they've been awesome, uh, but the thing about it is, is it's still a concern to me, of why is my residual getting ate up by the time it gets out to that or in town?
Can you shock it?
And I've never had it happen like that. Uh, well, we got a little shock that, uh, there was miscommunication that happened, it didn't get high, but it was higher than I ever liked it. Um, uh, but communication error, um, which, you know, we all are human, we have an error sometimes, um, but the thing about it is, uh. We're leaking out there, and I talked to BNR about it and everything, um, that tower out there at the, the gas station, technically, that tower didn't need to be in service. That's only in service because we need fire protection, uh, so if we start using a lot of water for outfire or something, that way we don't lower our pressure in the whole town. And that's what the pump, uh, booster station up here on top of the, the pond is supposed to be made for, uh, to where it holds back the pressure inside the system, uh, anyways, uh. Which Adam was telling you, we got new parts that we started working on this thing, and then it just went, I don't know why, but it did, but, um, um, pass, 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 menstruation, I should say, I guess. Um, uh, the other thing is, is on my engineering report that I got back in twenty twenty two, you know, we had chalking and blistering inside the tower. Uh, the other thing is, is that tower is not set up like a tower up here at Marycliff, where we have, uh, uh, incoming and an outflow, so the incoming is on top, and the outflow is in the bottom. That tower is out there, one way in and one way out, and it's at the bottom. Anyway, so basically, the water can't get a turnover for one, uh, with the blistering, the chalking, and stuff like that, which, I mean, the funding, you know, I'm not mainly considering getting the fund at the time. Uh, because, I mean, total cost, you know, is what the engineer, uh, threw out there at us on, at the time, was like a hundred twenty five thousand to re-scan, blast the tower and everything.
Is chalking from lime, or from?
Chalking is from actually the, the calcium and stuff, and that's, you know.
And blistering is.
Blistering is actually the neon pink that start to pop.
Oh, yeah.
Anyway, so you got rust.
Yeah.
And behind that, um, so that's biofilm there, so your residual's gonna get ate up by that, you know, um. Which, like I said, we're not low, I took our back teeth sample out there last month, everything's good, um, but the thing about it is, it's concerning to me, and, you know, and BNR understands. An operator is concerned over things when you start seeing different things, um, so here, next, not next week, but following week, uh, I'm gonna actually go up the tower, check our screen, look in the hatch, see what's going on. Uh, if it comes down to it, you know, if we gotta take it out of service, we gotta take it out of service.
And is blistering on the interior or exterior?
Anyway, well, it's on both sides, so, I mean, that tower has not got remanned in my house since I've been here, so. And I'm sure whenever Mike was here, I don't think it ever got remanned. I, I pressure worked outside of the pond, I remember that, but, but.
Pressure washed.
But the thing about it is, is like, we have inspections every five years on these towers, so, you know, we kinda space it out because the inspections are so costly, but I'm, uh, the thing about it is, is like with our new tower, uh, me and Adams actually spotted it, uh, up at the very top of the dome, it's already got running rust underneath the paint topping on the outside. We shouldn't ever start popping like that yet, and which we can't fall back on contractors that put it, or painted, you know, now, I mean, back whenever it's underneath warranty, because I don't think it's under warranty at all. So anyway, I'm, uh, but the cost, I mean, it's, it's just the cost, I mean, we talked about putting a stirr out there, it was gonna be like twenty-five thousand to put a stirr. So the thing about it is, technically in reality is drinking water purposes wise, we don't need that tower, but fire protection we do unless we have a booster station, we keep that out of pressure, and I think your cost efficiency would be putting the booster station back and trying to reman a tower.
You're gonna have to build booster stations still on water pressure.
Yeah, yeah.
This whole round of new parts, like thousands of dollars in parts sitting there, there's nothing.
And then, and the cost of this here, where I told you, you know, that was back in 2022, I, I'd hate to see it with neem and paint and stuff costing now. I mean, you might be looking at a half a million dollar now, so, you know, reman. But I was on, like I said, I was on the phone with DNR, talking to them about, they just told me a few things to try to do, to look at and see if we can justify. Anyways, and they told me if I feel comfortable or if I see something in there that, you know, we got to shut the tower down and drain it, and, you know, when you're in, but it's, the back tees ain't showing nothing, thankfully, I know we coordinate, we got enough coordination in the system to kill the bacteria, but it's just the biofilm keeps building and building, and this time of year with the heat, so it's kinda good, so, I mean, I didn't start seeing this until actually the last part or first part of March, when I started seeing.
Well, the thing with the biofilm is that it can produce a slime layer on the exterior of it that makes anything impenetrable to get the colonies that are underneath it, so you almost have to, the thing is, you have to almost shock it.
See, the thing about it, if I shock the system, I'm gonna go way over my limit.
Yeah.
And nobody's gonna be able to guarantee that.
Right.
So, I mean, four is your limit, four point O is your limit, and anyway, if you go over that, it's maximum talent, though.
And you can't isolate that tank, uh, take it offline to, to shock it?
Well, and the thing about it is, I can do that and then we're gonna have to, but the thing about it is, is there's no way to, there's a way to isolate it and, and dump it out and shock it, but there's no way to control the flow of water, because it goes in and it comes out, so if this tower's dropping, that tower's dropping at the same time, and I gotta have, there's one way in for water to go in and one way out, so if it had an overflow where we could do it that way, it'd be awesome, but it's good. So, um, but that, that there is the issue with that, which I'll let you guys know further down the road, we'll find out, I mean, I've been saying it on that, Adam, if it's something major, it's actually not, whatever. Um, the other thing is too, is had to replace three grinders with new ones, Fifth Street, Fourth Street, and, uh, and a splinter up, which we just stopped doing last night. The other thing is too, is we had to send one of our E ones back, it got warranty, um, but we had to send it back, it was installed out here on Eighth Street, um, and it was sounding alarm and wasn't pumping, uh, it was just a sater went out in it, and anyways, I'm, uh, they took it back, they tested it, which it's, you know, just a malfunction in the system, so they went ahead, rebuilt it, replaced it, or, you know, refixed it and brought it back down, which I put a new grinder, uh, up there at the time whenever that happened, so, um, hopefully it comes on the wood and nothing else goes crazy.
Should I wait for you to another?
Uh, the other thing is too, is I got a few of them that I had to work on, put floats in, and I'm, uh, relays, uh, a couple of them.
I was gonna ask you, uh, like today at two thirty, I got a call from City St. Mary recording, Tyler's voice center thing, uh, just that like an alarm from last night at nine thirty, so it was a little weird to hit a nine thirty alarm at two thirty in the next day, so I don't know if there's a.
So the thing about it is with that is, um, there might have been a, one, because we're on internet, um, two, there could have been a power failure and it didn't even call your, because I don't have a battery backup up there at the tower right now, that, that went out and I never got a new one to go back in, nobody never got one, I mean, I'm just walking up there, it was supposed to be like a three hour backup, um, so if the power did fail up on that hill or something, we still have power to the unit. The other thing is too, is with that, um, at least I know the system's working now, I know there for a while wasn't working, so we got it back working, he called me the day two, I was calling him, I'm like, what is going on?
Oh, man, and all that, uh. So maybe troubleshoot that so that it's working fine.
Yeah, and the thing about it is, is that, that system is actually outdated, it's, yeah, I mean, you know, uh, it's actually outdated, so Mike even said that to you when we was talking to him about it, um, so, I mean, you have to upgrade to make it better, so. Uh, a lot of that should not have to, I mean, we're, we're on a radio frequency anyways, off of that, it should be hard lined up to the tower through fiber, so, but, anyway.
Cool. Alright, is that it on that? Park and cemetery, Rose, you had anything?
I don't have any after the fair, it's not here tonight, so I don't know if he's delaying things to you or.
I walked past her two mornings ago and everything looked nicely mowed.
Yeah, I know, yeah, they were mowing, the rain's kinda been hitting this and the mess, but the park, I mean, they just doing the front part right now, uh, probably there's not much left of the park, I know there was that corral, I don't know if people think of that or not yet, but it's still open. But yeah, I'm looking at another one, there's, there's so much stuff out there, uh, even if you go to preserve water and also, um, MML and that, they'll show you open grants and some that just came open, even for parks or relocation of parks, but I'm just waiting on FAM to get back with what they wanna do with ours and all the other damage and everything else, so hopefully we might get some of that as a disaster, I'm not so sure, I don't, you know, it could be a couple of weeks, but, um, either way, I know it's maxed out, I mean, hopefully with Michael and, you know, everything goes in play here, I'm hoping it all falls in place, and also, like I said, there's, there's a couple of people that's called me is wanting to like, like the J C's, like I brought that up, I, you know, and I've been trying to get back in touch with Alex in Manhattan City, even if the parks don't work, what else, land we got just for their little things, just give the ball out up there, cause that's turning into a big sport, you know, the little racing go-karts for kids and mini-sprints and all that, and I, I, it's not like we're really building anything, we can remove it, it's just a dirt track and then they go around circles and it's kinda needing something really fast, but, you know, it would bring some stuff into, I don't know if anybody else has thought about anything, I haven't been able to get with you guys on your revitalization stuff, so I need to, and, uh, see what happens there, and see what our insurance covers too, just in case, you never know, but it'd be nice to do something for the citizens, I think Schultz is doing like something, gonna have some French colonial thing this weekend, and he's having something going on.
In St. John's here.
It's kind of St. John's down, and I guess he's out, I don't know if he's gonna have two trucks, but he put me in contact with somebody that's involved with all kind of stuff and people in Farmington, so we can see about that too, because, I mean, we've had different festivals, and right now, I know the park's closed, like, we can't even really use it, but there's areas that could be salvaged, used, bands, there used to be bands and everything down there, so, I mean, it's just a space not used, kinda like over there by the burn pile and stuff like that. So, I'm just trying to do some other things here, that's the big thing.
Right.
Other than, uh, illegal dumping, if anybody is a subcontractor contractor or anything gets caught dumping down there, I put a game camera, you ain't gonna find this one, but I catch you and it's your plate, you're gonna hate life, the last ones they did, they took three loads and had to dump it, I'm not burning your stuff, you can take it with you, don't bring your terrible trash or anything here, I'm tired of it, it's not our job to clean up everybody else's mess, I'm getting really kinda at my ends with, with that, and I'm sure you are too, get your equipment up at eight thirds, they get paid for it and what we do, we get costs, so, but yeah, uh, that's the only really big issue, and speeding on Third, we did put a yellow sign up in front of another, like, children play sign, there have been issues on Third Street, a lot of speeding, there's a lot more kids nowadays, it's like kind of first full circle, but I think, you know, there needs to be more stricter.
The fines go up if there's speeding and children playing.
Yeah, so, supposedly, but I guess also the new, we have to adopt new ordinances eventually because bingo's against the law, I guess, without permit, I don't know, it's what's settled there, but.
Bingo violation.
Bingo violation, so, but, um, the court's at the fines, but still it's a safety issue, and I'm tired, like, if kids get to play in streets and then we get hit, you're worried, all of them play and always crap, I'm almost at the point I'd be okay and I talk to other neighbors about speed, humps, not bumps. And I don't care if the previous person down the road is mad or not, but they actually do work and they're reversible and they go everywhere, you can move them where you need them, and they're cheap.
We have them and they have a line open.
They work on that.
They, they do, and then, and they can be moved, so you might leave and your pump is one, one place, when you come back home, it might be someplace else.
Yeah, you can actually, they're like rubber ones, they can come in.
And I don't care about that, but I mean, if you hit our.
They got a bucket now where you can actually drill them down, like take a concrete and drill, and then you put, uh, your, um, bolt down in there, and it's got a special head on it, and that, nobody, this kid is sucking on there, it's probably like certain.
That's why I was looking at it, it's just enough, just to slow them down, so it slows them down to about five to eight miles an hour, now you go backwards, man, that's your own problem, you just don't have a transmission fan, that ain't my problem, but you shouldn't be driving like crazy down Third, cause I timed it from here, from sixty-one to Bakers, and, and Third Street to Bakers, you're losing forty seconds, you ain't gonna lose your fish and beer that quick, so if it's one way or another, I mean, it's just the children remain concerned, I mean, you've seen it, it's been a photo, it's aggravated, they don't read or they can't read signs, I don't know, so what do you think?
Yeah, I agree. There's a lot of people, they, I met my excuse is, well, twenties kind of slow, don't you make, and I'm like, well, you're out there in neighborhoods, so not really, beers to take it.
I don't need neighborhoods, got them on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can make it five, or, I mean, we can change it to whatever we want.
But there's, there's really just no reason for people to do more than twenty bottles of.
It's because they don't care, it's not, their town's not, if it happened to their kids, they would raise a fit.
The next thing, I hear they're coming, and the kids are out there playing in the tree, basketball, where nothing's going down there.
Yeah, yeah.
Another concern is, are, are any, is anybody blind, deaf, anything like that on Third Street, that's a whole different.
See, back in the day.
That's a different issue, not slow children to play, but, you know, deaf child or.
We always put them up, or they did Charlie, remember that? Up here, when he rode his bike, cause he was deaf and every intersection, remember him, the little kid, cause he couldn't hear, he would hit him, but people actually were pretty affected, and now it's just like, hey, let's hit your kid, cause it ain't mine, you know, but I had cameras to get your plates, so it was okay, but that's just, it's getting old, I'm tired of it, I mean, your kids should be able to play basketball without getting hit, you're good guys, the years I know where, I went to where he lived, and that do work.
Well, it do work.
And we talked, so, I don't believe in it, you wanna give?
I think we got the point, that we should move on.
Well, that's what I'm asking about the cost, what do you think?
Oh, the cost of the, the bumps?
Yeah, you, you go to.
How much? No, I was gonna look at.
Like, like someone Amazoner, one seventy-five for a pair and then.
Oh.
But they're reasonable.
I'd say just spikes for everyone.
I agree. So, alright, moving on. Alright, anybody wants to talk? Nobody here, okay. Alright, um, they have a motion adjourned, and then go into closed session?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Alright, is there a second?
I have a second, yeah.
Motion made second to adjourn the regular board reading, go with the closed session, all biter?
Aye.
Any votes? Alright.